All right, welcome everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. It is six oh seven and the city council work session of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty four is called to order. May we have a roll call, please?
President.
Here.
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 Council member Hill.
Cruz.
Council member Edwards.
Here.
And council member Collins.
Here.
Great. Next is the approval of the agenda. Anything to change for the agenda?
I understand.
Okay. As such, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll not allow the most to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. Um, next up, we have a development agreements ordinance.
All right. Um, so thank you for convening this evening. So tonight we'll break this in half. So that I think the first half of our work sessions tonight will be to talk about development ordinance in general. And that will really kind of lay the foundation for the second part of the meeting, which will be, I'm having a discussion about a discussion about a specific project, um, which Victor is here to represent on the project team. I would would say that, um, we've had some discussions on this at the city council level. Um, and we've also had some discussions on development agreements at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. I'm going to share my screen and, um, kind of just to, um, provide some talking points, um, to hear what has been discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. All the buttons. I wanted to, um, have a memo in your packet last week, but I didn't get a chance of producing that. Um, so what I have on the screen here is just some talking points for tonight. Um, I'll highlight kind of what we has been discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission level, um, so far. Um, I think you will recall, we had a work session regarding the housing variety amendments and at that, um, last year and, uh, the housing, um, the city council at that, uh, at those work sessions. Task staff with coming back with some more information on development agreements, annexation agreements and plain unit development agreements. And Planning and Zoning Commission has had those discussions and work sessions, uh, which required a bit of education for, um, uh, for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, so what I have here, um, that's highlighted is essentially what the has been discussed with the Planning and Zoning Commission so far. Um, so just to get everyone on the same page, I just want to explain the background of a development agreement. So that is a, it's a contract between local government and a builder or developer. And so it doesn't necessarily be, need to be a huge developer. It can be a, it can be one private property owner, one single family house that wants to build an ADU over a garage. Um, but the purpose of the development agreement will be to, um, for these, um, I would say more unique scenarios or, or case by case scenarios. Where a proposed development, large or small, does not comply with the code, a code requirement or multiple code requirements. And the city council can entertain, so the, the applicant, the property owner can propose and the city council can entertain, um, a, um, the concept of an agreement between the two to waive a code requirement. In exchange for a public benefit that the city council cannot require. So it's a contract with city council. Um, it is authorized by state statute to some degree. Um, so, um, there are, there are, um, there's a general authorization for municipality center into development agreements. And the, um, the example that is provided, um, in, in, in the statute is, um, authorization for vested property rights. So that's the most basic form of a development agreement. So if a, um, if a, um, a property owner, developer, builder, uh, were to go through and receive a conditional unit use permit, for example, by any municipality, you know, in the, in the, um, the state. Uh, oftentimes there's going to be, um, vested property rights that will be associated with that. So, um, that vested property right might be three years. So in other words, the city council can say, okay, you are authorized to build this development, uh, within three years. But after three years, um, if our code changes, you're then sub, if you don't pull building permit and start construction, um, then you are, you're subject to the code, uh, at that time. So your vested property rights will expire. So the state, um, authorizes, um, this is the most common form of development agreement. For a developer to come in and say, actually, we'd like to extend that out to six years because we're going to phase this project. There's going to be multiple phases and we want to make sure if the code changes that we're not subject to that, that code change. Um, so beyond vested property rights, that contract, the development agreement, um, can, it can go beyond that. So it can include, um, public benefits that can be, um, required by code. In exchange for that, it can be a code waiver. It can be essentially like an extension or, um, or, um, I would not use the term variance though, because that gets into a whole other type of application. So it can allow the building height to go from twenty five feet to thirty five feet. So it can be, in that case, it's an extension or it's some relief, but it's not, it's not a complete waiver. Uh, we do not have a, a development agreement ordinance. So some cities have, um, in addition to what is authorized by state statute. Some cities have, um, an additional authorization in their code that says, um, that, um, the city council, um, will entertain development agreements. And these are the kind of things that we're looking for. So it's an authorization. It provides some guidance, uh, for the types about, uh, development agreements the city would, uh, would enter into. Um, so we do not have that. And I'll preface this with, if any point, I'm not, I'm not an attorney. Um, if any point, um, I say something that is, that is incorrect, I'm going to, um, give LUs with our city attorney's office the opportunity to step in and provide any kind of clarification. Um, so we have been working with our city attorney's office, um, on a, um, a development agreement ordinance. And I'm just going, so, um, what I'm going to talk about now is kind of this, this bottom half. Uh, so I think that it is, we, we talked about the importance of if city council was going to enter into an agreement with, uh, for these kind of case by case projects that are unique projects. Um, things that we may not necessarily anticipate, the public benefits that we may not necessarily anticipate in our current code or with future code amendments. Um, that a development agreement could be a tool for the city to obtain those public benefits. Um, and for, for projects that we, um, that we, we support. The, I think it's, it, we've talked about how it is important to have guidelines on that so that this city council, future city council has some parameters that they can work with. So we're understanding that we're not just opening up the, the floodgates for people to apply for development agreements to city council. Uh, so we, you know, it would be important to clarify the types of public benefits that we are looking for and also the types of, of code waivers that, um, that we would accept. And understanding that the intent of a development agreement is to provide some flexibility, uh, for case by case projects in the future that our current code may not anticipate. So for example, we may to need to obtain an easement across a private property that we would never have anticipated and we couldn't require by code. Um, but in that situation, um, that could be a type of public benefit that we, that we would allow within these parameters. Um, so what is, what is currently being discussed with the city attorney's office and what we're kind of working on a draft of it right now is, um, these, these guidelines. So you know, we, we have a housing crisis. So, so our top priority is to, um, since we, we don't have any kind of inclusionary zoning or incentive zoning yet in the code. For projects that are coming forward and proposing affordable housing, particularly a hundred percent affordable housing, that's absolutely something that we want to, we want to, um, entertain. Um, also, um, oftentimes I think that in the future, there will be, um, unique projects that require, um, some kind of, some kind of access, whether that be through right of way or easements. Um, whether that be for specifically for emergency services or, or the public in general. Um, so that, I think that is also something that we should, we should consider that we can't necessarily contemplate or require by code. Um, also like offsite improvements. So there may, there may be, um, projects that are, uh, near, um, public infrastructure or adjacent to public infrastructure that our code would not require the improvement or the installation of infrastructure offsite. But, um, that we could require that, um, considering the, um, the impact that property may have and just other nearby considerations. So those are the types of public benefits. And these are, you know, this is not a hard list, uh, letting you know, this is the update on what is actively being discussed and drafted with the city attorney's office. In terms of, um, the kind of waivers that we would allow, so, and I'm not using the term variance here. I'll, I'll talk about that here in a little bit, but in terms of the waivers that we would allow. Um, I think that these are most common, um, types of waivers that we could start with. And not, you know, we can always, if we were to authorize a development, uh, development agreements generally, um, by approval by city council. These are the kinds of, um, uh, waivers that we could start with and, um, we could always modify this list via ordinance because it would be, it would be in code. Um, but as, as I mentioned, vested property rights, for example, if, if a project came in and said, I, I would want to do this under the current code, um, but I would like to extend this to some reasonable timeline. I should note that the city level does not have, um, like basically buy right vested property rights. So if the city council approves a conditional use permit for, uh, for a property, uh, per code, um, if the building, if, you know, they do not immediately pull a building permit, then in the future, if the, if the code changes, there's not a specified three year limitation where someone is subject to, um, the code that was in effect three years ago. They have to request and receive that in writing. So that is something that we, case by case scenario, put into our conditional use permits. And there's, um, there's other, there's reasons for that. So, um, I think it's certainly reasonable to, um, to authorize city council to extend that for specific projects to a reasonable timeline, whether that was pull building permit within eighteen months or three years. Um, so that should probably be in there. I think the, the other two types of, um, most common, um, uh, challenges that we might see for like affordable housing projects, for example, would be, um, building height and density limitations. Uh, we have a, we have relatively permissive building height, um, limitations, but that, um, that could be in the future. Um, we, we could see more dense projects that we have small lots in level. So they may, may need to go up. So authorizing that in a development agreement authorization in code allows the city council to consider that specifically for, you know, in the example of affordable housing projects on small sites. And then, uh, and we'll talk about this tonight with the Philcrest proposal, but, um, uh, density limitation. So we have, um, had a work session with city council last year about the challenges with our density limitations specifically for, um, uh, ADU and duplex development. So we have small lots that are historically planted and on those small lots under our current zoning, um, it, 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 there are oftentimes challenges with constructing an ADU or, or constructing a duplex because the zoning code does not allow that smaller infill development. So we are working on a code amendment that would address that. Um, but there will be other projects that, um, that will might be unique projects like the Philcrest proposal we'll talk about tonight, uh, where density is, uh, an issue and other zoning criteria might be met and that might be the only one. So those are the guidelines, the parameters, um, that I think would be reasonable to discuss for any kind of development agreement authorization. Um, and we should, we, we probably should have some parameters so that, um, uh, this city council, future city council understands that these are the type of applications that we can, we can entertain and, um, and uh, you know, this is, we're not opening up the floodgates for just, um, any kind of development through development agreements. Um, I would encourage that this, any kind of development agreement, um, that is approved by city council in the future. Like I should say, any kind of development agreement that the city is authorizing is approved by city council through a public hearing process. So, um, I think what I'm discussing would be a two step process. The city attorney would draft an ordinance that would authorize development agreements. And then with parameters. And then, and those parameters wouldn't include approval by city council through a public hearing. So then any future project that came through proposing a development agreement would be, they could certainly go come in, uh, for presentations and work sessions in front of city council. But then there would be a first and second reading, uh, which is extremely valuable for public input and, and the transparency and the, and, um, the public involvement in this process. Because it is like a, like a variance, which I'll talk about next. Um, it is a, um, it is something that we want to hear from the public because there could be specific um, impacts, uh, to adjacent property owners, um, other property owners, specifically adjacent property owners. And people may have purchased their property with the understanding of what the current code allows. And, um, those property owners should be notified if they're, if the property that is adjacent to them is allowed to, uh, through an ordinance by city council to, um, to not comply with some portion of, of the zone code.
So specifically no administrative approvals with this process?
That would be my recommendation, yes. So, and, uh, so I have two more things to say on this. Um, the, the, um, my next point is that, um, this should be, um, run in perpetuity, should run with the land. So, uh, this would be a recorded document. Once the, the ordinance is approved, the ordinance would authorize the development agreement. And then the development agreement would essentially be attached, it'd be, you know, in a, in a, in a form approved by the city attorney. And it would have, um, signature blanks. And then that development agreement would be signed. And the development agreement would be recorded with the Lake County Kirkland reporter so that if anyone purchased that property in the future, that they would be aware that there was a development agreement. So for example, if the property, uh, changed hands and you would have the opportunity to talk about, um, if you're entering into an agreement with someone, if that property owner, um, sells the property, what happens in that situation? Um, but that, that property owner is put on notice that the zoning for their property was changed in some way. And so it's not rezoning, but it's, it's that someone could develop this property in a way that is different than says in the code. The last thing I'll say is, uh, just clarification between, uh, the differences between variances and development agreements. So a variance, um, as the, the board of adjustment, you know, reviewed a variance application last week. Um, a variance is, uh, is a process that is intended, uh, when there is something that is unique about a property where if you were to strictly interpret the zoning code and apply it to their proposed development, they would create some kind of hardship. And so it is allowed for the, you know, board of adjustment to, to introduce some kind of reason in varying the code where if you were to apply the code, um, it just wouldn't be fair, uh, as if you were to apply it to everyone else. Uh, so that's the purpose of a variance. When you approve a variance, when city council approves a variance, you cannot condition that variance based on, um, some, something that the property owner will provide that's not required by code. So in other words, if someone said, I would like to, I get, receive a variance to exceed my building height. The city council can't say, okay, we're going to allow you this variance, but we're getting in condition this variance based on you providing an affordable housing unit within this development. Can't do that. That would be arbitrary, but you could do that through a development agreement process. And I'll, I'll pause there. Take questions?
Yeah. Just one question. So in a, in a case where, um, there's certain areas already in a situation where they don't meet code up to begin with. Uh, would their process then just be a variance or a development agreement? Cause it wouldn't make too much sense for it to be a development agreement if it's already developed, but.
Uh, sorry, just, sorry, so you're talking about as built, like something that's already constructed?
Yeah.
Sorry, could you just repeat that one more time?
Basically just asking about the situation at, uh, the CNE.
Okay. Okay. So the CNU, um, so this is the, um, the mobile home, um, parked behind Family Dollar. Um, and so we've had conversations about development agreements for that property that would allow um, code waivers in the future. I guess the concern with, with that is, um, and this is something that if we were to authorize this, this would be kind of like a, um, a, a unique situation that will run by the city attorney's office, but most of the time development agreements are for, uh, is for a specific, a specific development that is about to occur.
Yeah.
It would not be a, a waiver in perpetuity for the property. So, um, a development agreement would be ideal for a situation where something is about to be constructed. And, um, they need, they are requesting a code waiver in exchange for a public benefit and that agreement would run for a short period of time, but don't have a termination. I would, um, the development agreement, I, I would not think that the ideal situation is authorizing a code change specific for that property in perpetuity. Um, but that would be something that I would need to, um, um, talk with the city attorney about because it's not the, it would not, I think it's not exactly what this, um, development agreements in general are intended for. Um, maybe basically code waivers in perpetuity, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily want to rule it out.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, it took me a second to understand.
You're all good.
Any other questions?
The developer agreement allows things like deed restrictions to be recorded in perpetuity.
Correct.
He builds a deed restricted development, sells it two years later, it can't then be turned into condominiums, condominiums or anything like that.
Correct.
It's, it's all recorded for a quarter, including the restrictions.
Correct. I can move on to, um, the specific conversation about the development agreement for Philcrest. Okay.
Yes, please.
So I, I'm, I'm grateful that, um, that Philcrest has, um, proposed this at, at this current time. Cause we have been having conversations about development agreements, um, both at the city council and, and planning and zoning commission level. And, um, I will say that I, I think that this, uh, project is an excellent, um, um, let's say like pilot project for, for discussion of this work session tonight. Um, so I will introduce, uh, Victor Christian. Um, Victor, do you want to just provide some, uh, background on, um, yourself, uh, your Philcrest Inc. entity and the property?
Sure. Um, yeah, we bought this lot back in two thousand and thirteen. And my initial thinking was to try to do shipping containers and that turned out not to be as fabulous as people say they are. It's a lot more work than whatever. Um, so just for the past ten years, we've been bouncing around ideas, what to do, what to build. And, uh, we got in touch with Chaffa a couple of years, well, that was about a year ago. And, um, I was thinking about affordable housing, but it seemed like most of the programs for like, for like hundreds of units, you know? Um, so Chaffa had this small scale housing program that they came up with. Um, so we started an unprofitable, that's still pressed. And, um, they put us in touch with the architectural team. They're going to do a funding package and all of that for us. Um, we have the drawings and everything and that's basically where we're at, you know? Um, I've always wanted to do something for the community. I didn't want to just build and flip, you know, I didn't want to do that. Um, the affordable housing was always one of my things that I wanted to do. So.
Thank you.
Sure.
So just as, uh, providing some, so, you know, I guess in order to provide some context for, for this conversation tonight. Um, this site, um, at two twenty East Eleventh Street consists of, um, I guess the original lot and also a vacated alley. And I, I've been able to confirm in, I think, uh, three different ways that that alley was vacant. I haven't tracked down the original ordinance that vacated the alley, but I've seen multiple, uh, survey documents that are recorded that referenced this vacated alley, uh, including a survey that the city commissioned on its own for another project nearby. Uh, so this site is, uh, located, you know, just one lot removed, uh, to the east of Family Dollar. Uh, the alley, there is an alleyway access, uh, to the rear. Uh, it's my understanding that is still platted as, as alley right of way. Um, and I will, so this is, you know, a conversation tonight, not be super formal, but I'm, I'm going to throw your plans on the screen and I'll just quickly narrate them. And the, the council saw this at the presentation and then I'll kind of get into the, to the deal points. Uh, so I'll talk about this in a little bit too, but the, one of the purposes of a work session for a development agreement is what I would call a fit test. So if we're, we're considering some waiver to a code requirement, we want to understand that the remainder of the project fits on the site. And so, uh, what is currently being proposed would be six units split in between two buildings. Um, so you would have access both from East Eleven Street and also access from the alley. This would be considered, uh, six unit multifamily development by our zoning code. So the use itself would still require a conditional use permit process. Uh, so that would be public hearings, uh, through planning and zoning commission and city council. So in other words, if, if a density waiver was authorized for a development agreement, everything else, all the other zoning code requirements would still be reviewed by city council through a public hearing. Uh, so, yes.
What does a unit mean? Is a unit, uh, yeah?
Could be, it'd be a, a, uh, defined living space that could, has all the functions to serve a family. So in other words, um, a single family house has a bedroom and a kitchen, uh, bathroom, sleep, sleeping space. And accessory dwelling unit, um, is also a, a unit. It has a, it can have a, whether it's studio or have multiple bedrooms, has a kitchen, bedroom, sleeping space, bathroom.
Okay.
Um, and that, so that could, a unit can be a, um, so a single family, uh, um, so a single family would be one unit, a single family and a, uh, accessory dwelling unit will be two units. A duplex would be two units, a three, um, a, a town, town home complex with three houses adjacent to each other would be three units. And then, you know, that could go all the way up into multifamily apartments.
Okay. And so are we seeing all six units here or where?
It's a two story.
It's a two story.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, that's probably the best.
Okay.
Great.
So three on top, three on bottom. Cool. Right. Uh, so the point being, this would be six unit development requiring conditional use permit. Uh, I think we, we did, um, talk about how this building would probably have to be shifted in order to comply with the side setback requirement because there are stairs. Uh, so that's not a concern from staff, you know, they're, um, they would just need, this building would need to shift. And, uh, there's not a ton of room, but it appears that that there'd be enough space. Um, the staff has reviewed the rest of this and generally it's in compliance with the zoning code requirements for height, for, um, setbacks, for, um, block coverage and the parking requirements. Uh, there's, uh, not all the cars are shown, but they're, they're showing four parking spots with this, with the conditional use permit, we would need to get into, um, you know, more specific, we would need to have a more, um, uh, we need to have an actual drafted site plan. So these are just concepts right now, but we would have dimensions for things like parking spaces and all those things. So all that would be yet to come. This is still conceptual. Uh, so I think, um, staff's perspective is that, um, it, uh, in terms of a fit test is that the project does fit in terms of the zoning code requirements. So the, the one piece that it does not comply with would be the density requirements. So if you do the density calculations, it, the density calculations and I included this. Um, sorry, I didn't include this. You didn't get a staff report for this one. Um, but the density calculations come out to just under two units are allowed. Uh, so with six units, so this would be a, uh, increase, uh, in the density limitations, um, you know, by orders of magnitude. Uh, one of the comments I'd like to make is that in terms of architecture, so, um, if a development agreement was approved by city council, there's no authori- authorization by city council that the applicant, um, is approved for this type of architecture. So the development agreement would be specifically just for what's requested, the, the density waiver to go from one unit to six units. Um, architecture and all the other zoning requirements that can be reviewed during the conditional use permit application. I'll pull up the talking points that I have for development agreement or for this development agreement. Um, so what is being proposed would be six units, um, of deed restricted of, um, housing. So this is, we're not necessarily, you know, using the term affordable housing. Um, we could use the term community housing. Well, this is a restriction of the occupancy of the units to where the, uh, the income of the units is limited to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. And I can pull up the, the charts and what those numbers exactly mean. And so when we say deed restricted, that means that there would be a restrictive covenant in agreement that would be recorded against the property that would be required by the development agreement that's reported against the property that in perpetuity restricts the occupancy to a hundred and twenty percent AMI.
Just quick question about that. Would that, uh, deed restriction be ran through city?
That's a good question. We, we do not have any deed restrictions at this point in time. Um, I would, I would encourage that, it looks like I started.
The restriction would be run through the county, wouldn't it? Didn't speak, run through with.
It would, uh, well, probably, we clarify that in, in, because we, we haven't done this yet, you know, but I would, I would suggest that it would be enforced by the regional housing forty.
Yeah.
It's kind of, sorry, I, uh, I, I was sharing on my screen and not sharing for Zoom. Sorry about that.
It's like Mayor Green's hand is up.
If it was, I think she.
What, what was up? I, I was debating whether or not to ask this because I think this may be, uh, again, a question to kind of punt down to the regional housing authority, but with the AMI, since we calculate it annually, would subsequent deed restrictions shift accordingly if our AMI shifts over the years?
Yeah, uh, generally speaking, yes. If the AMI shifts up or down, um, deed restriction, it does follow it. That's why it's the percentage rather than the hard numbers. So, um, if one twenty percent AMI right now is seventy for an individual and it goes up to eighty in a couple of years, then, uh, eighty is near one twenty percent AMI. So it will shift with each, uh, new year. Typically AMI gets out around April, though we've seen it as late as May and June. So.
So that would, just to bracket. That would come in when it was time to sign a lease, I would assume.
Um, if it is rental, yeah. Um, but if it's Um, if it is rental, yeah, um, but if it's. Uh, home buy, it doesn't matter. Once you buy the home, you just have to be eligible for it at the time of purchase. Um, not throughout, um, similar to, um. You know, you can't deed restrict it and force someone who purchases a home to work at a certain place. Um, if you are purchasing the home, you're purchasing it, it is now yours and the person, no one can control. How much your income goes up or down, other than if you can pay your bills or not.
My assumption with this property listed, this would be run as a as a rental property, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And. There is a difference um in terms of strategy between deed restriction and uh rental restrictions. Uh, it would be called a rental restriction notes. But uh there's a difference between the two in terms of like the terminology and the type of contract that's needed. Um, I I would have to do more. To really find the difference, but I know that, you know, uh, at least in the regional housing authority, that's something that we. Uh, keep in mind when we're going through um a lot of that, that the the differences present and you do need different types of guidelines. Because rules like AMI, um, as Joey mentioned, that does actually apply at least to lease. And you do actually have to continue qualifying to um live there every time your lease is up. Um, depending of course on the type of restriction. Um, and similar to employment, that one is a place where you could require the person to have to be employed within a certain area. Um, so there's a lot more nuance and difference between a deed restriction for home purchase. And for rental and how that operates.
Sorry. Go ahead, Tim. Uh, so I would, I would say that I would, I think staff would be supportive. Uh, 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 you know, assuming that the council agrees with that the project fits on the site and um. You know, that we're agreeable to uh the density um waiver. That the deed restriction um provide flexibility for both rental and ownership of those units. Um, both being restricted to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. And obviously, all the terms are not spelled out on, you know, in these bullet points. Uh, this is just very high level at this point and that can be refined and will be refined. And city council will have um ultimate uh decision making on on all of those terms.
Can the restriction require long term rental versus short?
I would, I would highly encourage that the uh restriction, uh, that the deed restriction only allow long term rental and not short term rental.
You can't, yeah, you can't AMI restrict somebody on short term, well, so it would be out of the question.
Typically, there's also a lot of must be primary house um requirements for deed restrictions as well. Those are really low level deed restrictions generally, so typically that tends to be part of it. So where it has to be your primary home, it can't be like your second home.
And I think if if this were to proceed, staff could um come back with like further refined deal points. Um, so you know, so then the highest level deal point is a hundred and twenty percent AMI on six units. And then we could come back with uh some refinement on, you know, obviously in uh in conversation with the applicant. On uh what some of these uh further terms and conditions would be. And I would probably, I would probably, um, you know, bring that to you in a um like a a presentation in advance of like a first reading. Um, so that you, you know, if if there are any questions or concerns, you could communicate that before we have the city attorney draft the full agreement for first reading. Okay, uh, so that is the public benefit uh commitment um that the applicant is proposing. As I mentioned, everything else is proposed to comply with code and and city council have an opportunity to review that. In terms of what city, uh, the waiver that city council will be authorizing, I've just spelled out the math here on the screen. Uh, is that typically, um, well, doesn't spell this out, but typically, uh, well, typically, but under the um current zoning. Would only allow for one point something units. And so this would allow this go up to uh six dwelling units. And let's see, I didn't spell this, but there's a, it would be sixty, yeah, I did, sixty-three dwelling units per acre would. Uh, would be what would be allowed if you were to calculate this on a per lot basis. Right now, the the zoning code limitation is nineteen dwelling units per acre. Um, the housing variety code amendments that we are, um, that we have been working with P and Z and city council on. Uh, in some districts for some types of developments are proposing that, uh, we're proposing that that density go up to forty dwelling units per acre. Acre to put that into perspective in terms of the um, the density. And there are four parking spaces. Uh, two of those parking spaces are alley access and as best we know, that is an active and accessible alley for rear parking. Yes, from our site visit, was, yeah.
Now, would this? In any way, I know there's legislation right now at the state level um in terms of parking. Does this in any way be affected by that if that moves forward or could imagine that, but.
So that would be to, yeah, it would be, it would be grandfather. That would be, if that that, I think I know what you're talking about, that would be, uh, as part of a package. And that that. That uh bill would prohibit municipalities from, um, I guess implementing minimum apartment requirements. So right now, our 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 code requirement is one space per unit. So for six units, you have a parking space requirement of six spaces off street. Which is uh relatively permissive compared to other jurisdictions. Some jurisdictions require two spaces or one point something spaces.
Our new zoning would not require a parking space for a single, for a single unit, correct?
The the uh housing variety amendments proposed to. Um, since we're making some additional allowances to allow for more ADUs and duplexes, it would require. Just to be, address that impact, potential impact, it would require one parking space for um each duplex unit. And one parking space for accessory dwelling unit, but a single family home.
But a single family home does not have parking.
Current, under the current code, it does not. We're not, right now, that's not proposed to be changed.
Very good. So you're not far off of that now. Thank you.
So I think that, you know, the, I just want to be clear that the, you know, the purpose of this work session was to. Is make sure that um if staff were to work with the applicant to prepare a development agreement. Um, with terms uh for city council to decide upon and return for. A uh the minimum, you know, first reading, a second reading, uh, which would involve a public hearing of an ordinance. Um, that the city council will be supportive of that. What we also have to do is, um, and this is also something that we'd like to have feedback tonight because this um be a. Um, uh, a cart before the horse scenario, we, we can't uh proceed with a first reading for Felcrest. Until the city attorney authorizes a development agreement and um ordinance and then that is approved by city council. So we need to do that first. And then we could do this next. Um, so that, I think that's the the feedback that I would like to have tonight is one. Um, with the parameters that I put on the screen earlier, would city council um be supportive of city, uh, working in city attorney's office to. Approach city council with a first reading and second reading, authorizing development agreements. And then also would city council be supportive for this specific project. Um, returning for with an ordinance for first and second reading, authorizing the density waiver in exchange for a hundred percent affordable housing. Uh, and AMI restricted housing.
So why don't we, if it's okay with you, Chaff, then let me know if it isn't, proceed to take them one at a time. Uh, and we'll work on the development agreement ordinance first. And I'd love to just go around and hear from each council member, um. Of if you support, uh, what your thoughts are on proceeding with the idea of an ordinance for development agreements. Would, would you be willing to start?
Yeah, I would. I'd like the idea of coming up with an ordinance. I I do wonder about the timing of it. Uh, you said that you've already been working on it, the city attorney, just thinking about the tiny, timing of having. The first reading and second reading and still meeting the needs of the developer for Felcrest. Do you have any idea what the schedule would be like?
We spoke at our city attorney Tuesday, I think. When today's Tuesday, when do you go Tuesday? And it it's possibility, it's not a, it's not a. Gigantic drafting ordinance, so I think it's uh, it's in the works. We're hoping to have it shortly.
Yeah, you know, we had um initially started with the city attorney's office of trying to blend the housing variety amendments with the development agreements. And we, um, the development agreement authorization. And we had gone into the details of that with planning zoning commission in some work sessions. And it was decided to to not try and blend those and pull those apart. Um, and it was a worthwhile exercise. Um, but I think that um these accomplish uh two different things. Development agreements are for. Um, special projects, unique projects, case by case scenario. And the housing variety amendments would be to hopefully incentivize the private sector to do these things by rights, that are just getting building permits. Um, so targeting two different areas. And so I think because it is more of a simple ordinance authorizing with kind of the terms that I have on the screen. I don't think it's a huge lift for the city attorney's office. And so, you know, I. I don't want to, um, you know, to commit ourselves to anything, but I'm a few months, um, you know, to have, to go through a first and second reading process. You know, three months approximately, give or take.
As of now, if I can just jump in, we are on track to have something um ready for first reading. Potentially by April second.
Fantastic.
Okay.
And then we have, you know, when we have second reading, uh, we have public notice and then the ordinance becomes thirty day, it becomes effective thirty days. Post-second reading. Um, so, you know, that sounds like approximately a three month process.
Good question for the developer. Rough idea of when you would want to try to break ground on your project?
Next year.
Okay. There is time. But getting it done this spring would be a huge one for you.
So essentially, you know, from today, approximately three months for the development agreement authorization ordinance to amend the code. Um, that's a three month to four month reasonable timeline for, uh, expectation for the the um development agreement. Specific to the Fel- Felcrest project. And then the applicant can submit for the conditional use permit process. The weekends, there can be a little bit of concurrency there. Um, so whereas we're getting into the fall and things, we're, we're not, we're not wasting time, but a conditional use per- permit process, which would be a two month process. Um, and then that would be um prior to some middle of construction documents for building permits. So all we're probably talking about, um, we're probably talking about eight to nine months. Prior to issuance of, prior to submission for a building permit application.
And the building season for next year starts in April and May, so that that's a good time to.
You know.
For not slowing down this project.
And you're probably not going to want to apply for your building permit. Um, like you, when your building permit is issued, you have a certain amount of time period to construct or just to start construction. So you're, um, you don't want to wait till the last minute, but you know, you're probably going to want to be applying for your building permit application next spring with anticipated start of construction. So that when that building permit is issued, you have the maximum amount of time possible to start construction, pull the building permit, start construction, you know, in the summer. In the snow melts and uh, so you're maximizing the window of your building permit expiration.
Yeah, and it is twelve months with an additional.
Yeah.
With an addition. Available.
Yeah. So I I see that this, this process for Felcrest um allows plenty of time because that timeline basically. Sounds like a lot of these things could be done ballpark by the end of the year.
Does that answer your?
It does, yeah.
Yeah.
Fully in favor.
Great, yeah, yeah. Great. Let's go to Joey next, as far as an ordinance.
Fully in favor of the developer agreement process.
Great. And?
Yeah, I certainly like the idea, especially with the housing challenges that we have. And the density issue. Um, yeah, I would be in favor of developer agreements that can provide some flexibility.
Great. I agree. I like the flexibility to allow us to improve projects like this that. Can help alleviate some of the housing reasons.
Yeah, I'm fully in favor of having a developer, uh, or development agreement ordinance.
Dana, would you like to weigh in at all?
Sure, I agree with the Tims. I think the uh, the, the attractive thing for this to me. Is the flexibility and the ability to. Detail specific requests depending on what's going on with the city at the time and what's unique or applicable to. A, a particular piece of land.
I'm all for it as well, for all those reasons. Um, why don't we then shift to would we support um directing staff to continue with. The Felcrest project and why don't we?
Uh, yes.
Take it from you. Yeah, great.
Um, couple of questions for the developer, uh, very small. Project, uh, would Felcrest be managing the rentals for this property or would it be done locally?
Um.
Who, who is responsible for the long term management?
Be me and my sister.
We'd be managed. So it would, you'd, you'd, it'd be a closehold.
Yeah, it's a good. Absolutely.
Uh, second, this is a very different development in a, in a very established neighborhood. Uh, what are Felcrest's plans for communication with the existing neighborhood? I would assume there will be some backlash to you bringing in something very nice and new and. And and this new construction in the middle of a well-established older mobile home park. Have you, have you considered that communication?
I am. I'm hoping that they. Are seeing that it's for a good cause for affordable housing.
I hope so. But you'd have to assume a little bit of blowback. I just, that just seems like human nature. You're building something new and shiny in an area that's not particularly new and shiny.
Right.
Um, just as long as that's something that's crossed your mind.
I can't think about the bad side, you know, um, to try to do something good. Just to go for it.
Yeah.
Um.
It just seemed like something that needed to be brought out as well, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, it it's gonna be shiny and new, but I think. You know, levels up and coming. We got one block away, we got the rail yard. Got big and shiny and new, you know, just trying to do something compatible, well, it's hard to be compatible. You know?
And this in the middle of a, of a very important affordable housing element to our. I think some of that. After we take care of the WRX. I'm very much in favor of pursuing that.
Tim?
Yes, and I, I like the idea of. The specific development agreements going through that. First reading, second reading, public hearing process. That's an important component of it.
Do you see an uh necessity for any further work sessions? Um, prior to first reading regarding this specific project?
Think that would be beneficial to have at least one. Um, work session hashing out. From what is expected of the, to be about first.
To Joey's point, I know quite a few of those families and I think there will be some blowback. So it might be worth considering some kind of messaging campaign. Or deliberately making sure they're aware of the public hearing so that they feel. We concluded to kind of avoid any concerns that we had. Um, that also seems, I'm curious about the architecture. Chaff, you mentioned that's not necessarily. The architecture that's going to be used, is that right? Did I hear that correctly?
I, I think I was making the point that um the council is not committing to this architecture with the development agreement.
That's it.
And so I, I would, I think that, um, you know, while we're all here at the table. Um, certainly, it's not the main purpose for this work session, but certainly any initial comments you have regarding the design. Um, I'm sure the applicant would be, you know, receptive to those. Um, that could also be, you know, discussed in a future work session for the development agreement. And definitely will be discussed during the conditional use permit process, but council is not making a commitment to architecture through the density waiver.
Gotcha. Yeah, it's just not container. Uh, yeah, I'm in favor.
Um, I guess to start, yeah, I'm definitely in favor. I don't know that for a development agreement, we would need another. Um, hearing, to be quite honest, I think this is pretty straightforward, but absolutely, if you feel like it's appropriate. I wouldn't mind uh learning more. Actually, completely disagree with it. Y'all, I know the community very well and I work with them actively. Um, I don't think they're gonna push back. I think if they find out that they're affordable housing, it's for rent affordable housing, they're not. Gonna um mind too much. Um, I think about. They're not gonna, um, mine too much. Um, I think about it this way. Um, there certainly was some pushback towards, or at least some complaints about the rail yard that is an unaffordable, um, unattainable housing built literally right next to it. So it's really hard for me to imagine knowing them, especially per at a personal level, that they would push backs. And I'm more than happy to play a role in having that conversation with them, the majority speaking Spanish, um, and I'm happy to play that role if it's needed. Um, from a facilitation standpoint, I don't know that I could offer anything else because I'm a city council person, obviously, but I'm happy to play that, um, role as appropriate.
Dana?
Yeah, I I'm entirely in favor of going full steam ahead. I do think that I I think it was new Tim who brought up the idea of just sort of either a messaging campaign or actually just open communication um, with any of the surrounding properties is just good practice in general. Um, but I do think that whether this is the architectural uh, plan that that they move forward with or not, you know, we have Family Dollar there and CNU and rail yards and then, you know, county vehicles storage down the, down the street. Like this is just another one of those really funky, doesn't conform with any particular style areas of Leadville, um, that I don't actually personally have a problem with.
Great. Uh, I love it. For all the the reasons that have been mentioned, I like that it's near the Mineral Belt Trail. Um, it's proximal to Family Dollar, the library. So it's, I feel like it's important as we develop community housing to not marginalize community housing. And I feel like this project doesn't. And and so I really like that. Um, I appreciate it. It can be a pilot of our community development agreements. So thanks for, um, if it proceeds, thank you for uh, yeah, being helping with that piloting process. So I support it. I would like to make some space for public comment if there are any, um, unless anyone has a urgent question on the matter right now.
One more question for the developer. Should this be successful when he plans for future development? Do you know that though?
Yes.
More.
That's it.
Very good.
Yeah, that's my niche.
Very good.
Nice. Uh, any members of the public on Zoom or physically present who'd like to comment on these topics specifically? Steven? Uh, we'll do three minutes as you indicate. Go ahead.
Well, I think this is a very good idea, Richard. Thank you. Um, and I can't see why it wouldn't. I don't see it clashing at all, especially with the point about the rail yard being such a humongous, unaffordable, uh, thing for housing. It it, uh, the rail yard is really not it doesn't seem like it fits in in a community, um, because it's a a wealth oriented kind of thing. But I think the communication idea is really good. And I think that maybe if you, uh, tried the two hundred foot parameter, or maybe if you wanted a smaller thing, get the property owners and send them an individual letter, um, and maybe you have some kind of a, a meeting, um, that you respond to. And maybe that would, uh, kind of get some people to express their feelings. And if they saw that they were, um, recognized, um, they would never be in obedience. They would be, they'd feel like they were part of the project and they'd get on board instead of being outside of the project, still just throwing it on. You know, just popping up, say, hey, we liked your ideas about this, little feedback. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Steven. Uh, any members of the public on Zoom who would like to?
Um, yeah, I'd like to. It's Craig Cool from three one five East Seventh Street.
Good, Craig.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Um, I think it's a great project. Um, my concern is that another code, um, only requires one parking space per unit. Um, I'm, I'm just concerned that the six parking spaces, um, maybe is not enough and maybe we need eight. You know, for the two bedrooms also, um, I know there's nothing in the code, but guest parking or something like that. And then snow storage, um, on the property, if that's defined, but otherwise I think it's a great project. Um, another thing is the, you know, the, I mean, I I know it's very expensive to build, um, but the hundred and twenty percent of AMI is, you know, at the present figures that have been released from the state of Colorado. The studio rentals like nineteen hundred and something dollars a month, um, which to me is pretty expensive. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Great, um. Yeah. Based on public comment, do any council members or staff have any comments or questions?
I'll just, um, you know, the the parking comment and the snow storage comment are both good, um, considerations. We will, as we go, as we try to support housing in our community, uh, in few, in these future years, and we're making code amendments and we're sponsoring projects, the regional housing authority, et cetera. The, there will be situations where we have to make decisions, um, and then they can be tough decisions sometimes on um, housing versus X. Um, so that could be parking, that could be, uh, snow storage. And those, um, it's inevitable. And because we're trying to maximize sites and, um, we're trying to maximize our, uh, economies of scale when we're constructing projects. While we're building projects, it makes the most sense to build as many units as possible from a affordability perspective. So those, uh, those are, um, um, things that will come up and and there are always things that we should consider. Um, so this will not be the first project that we will have to look at our current parking requirement versus um, additional parking or our current snow storage requirement versus, um, additional snow storage. Uh, or or any other, um, non codified, you know, code requirements for that matter. Uh, so, um, so definitely worth, uh, considering and it will be something that we'll always have to consider, I think, with with future housing projects.
Just quickly to Craig's point. I think as we look at more long term solutions like this, we need to consider that pretty much every teacher in town would be priced out of this. That the one hundred twenty twenty percent of AMI is a pretty high bar for a lot of working people in town. To look at truly affordable solutions, we have to take about one hundred percent AMI and even lower. So can you pull up the table?
Uh, yeah.
I just like to see it. I I know Grayson did work on getting a up to date table using this year's data alongside with what it would cost to do um, thirty percent of someone's income for rent, which is what's considered the max cap for someone to pay rent. So it'd be interesting to see what those figures are.
Well, anybody thirty percent or higher is considered housing insecurity.
Yeah. Which would be.
And that is a good question, actually. I don't think we've, we've mentioned, we've, we've talked about targeting um, renters at the hu- hundred and twenty percent AMI or below, but would it be would the rent be thirty percent of that? Or how would we be calculating the rent if it's deed restricted to a hundred and twenty percent AMI?
I think that's how Craig got his nineteen hundred per month.
Okay.
And based on what you did, I came up with seventeen fifty a month. Okay.
I thought I saw a rental chart. Don't they do that?
Yeah, yes, they do do that.
Yeah, that's better than that. That's, yeah, it is.
So that would be a thing to to figure out for the future deed restriction conversations and the the agreement would be what percent of income for the renter within that income threshold would be, would be charged.
Uh, and typically that's in the, um, agreement itself. A good example of this is, uh, Chaype Housing Trust, um, will not accept you as a candidate to purchase one of their homes that are being sold at a hundred percent AMI or less. If you cannot get a loan that uh, ensures that you only pay thirty percent of your monthly income at the time of purchase, of course.
Okay.
Um, and that that is something that you have to pay attention to in that the, that, um, deed restriction or whatever type of restriction you put in, um, to ensure that the person can actually afford it and they're not going above that thirty percent AMI.
Uh, so this is what you're, yeah, bring to us. Let me share this on the screen. And if there's a twenty twenty four chart, uh, this is the twenty twenty three chart. I do not have that.
Twenty four is.
Um, because this, I think it, I think it comes out in May.
Yeah.
Um, the twenty twenty four. So let's see. All right. So this is an excerpt from Chappa's um, AMI, uh, limits. And so for Lake is on the bottom. See, so a hundred and twenty percent AMI is this row right here.
And and the first, uh, column is specifically referring to, um, the rental rate, um, per individual house, hold and bedroom. Second column there is referring to how many people, uh, would make the, uh, AMI percentage. So seventy three thousand is the AMI percentage for an individual. It doesn't scale like double. So eighty three is the next one for two, ninety three for three, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but you can see there that um, affordability in terms of rents definitely is relatively high as, um, Tomes was saying. Uh, for, uh, what the rent charge is, uh, for those individuals.
And to be clear, I think this is an incredible part of the solution.
Yeah.
But as we look at broader um, strategies, we need to take.
And I would, I would add a maybe a staff comment relative to that. So, uh, so I I completely agree. I think there are different strategies that, um, the city and the regional housing authority can use to target um, all of our needs. We have a spectrum of needs. And so I would, I would not propose that, generally speaking, that development agreements um, or incentive zoning, like the housing variety amendments are, um, the best tool to target our lowest income housing needs. Um, it it's, it's not going to work. And, uh, but we still have needs for our upper AMIs at a hundred and twenty percent, a hundred and forty percent. And so this is one of the strategies for filling that need. Code amendments, you know, um, can, uh, for incentive zoning can be another way to, uh, to meet a similar need. Um, and then projects like the regional housing authority is working on can be a way to accomplish other needs and those could go into potentially lower AMIs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, as an individual, as an independent developer, trying to build any kind of housing at all for less than a hundred and twenty percent is virtually impossible. It's just gotten too expensive without, without sedation.
Yeah.
Um, and to that point, uh, you know, I'm a very strong advocate for some changes in the current guidelines that we have at the regional housing authority in terms of equity lens. But I also understand that, you know, the situation is what it is, the private developer. It, there certainly is conversation to be had, right? Um, in terms of if we were to provide assistance to you, could you guarantee a different type of AMI, you know? So I think those are conversations that we should open the door for more often. Um, not only in, um, the regional housing authority, but especially in these development agreements. And I wonder if that's something that we could potentially have an ordinance or something to discuss more directly as to what type of percentage that restriction applies to whatever type of restriction it may be. Um, whether it's land trust or deed or some type of rental, um, it, I think, um, obviously each developer is going to have a different appetite. Um, very clearly, you're a much more generous, uh, developer than typical, um, and you're much more open to the idea of having uh, deed restrictions. And if we can work with you, you find a way to provide, um, rental system or rental units for lower AMIs. And is that achievable, right? And if it's not, then it's not certainly what you could stick with, uh, when you presented, that would totally be fine by me. But if there is a way to achieve that, uh, if that could be part of the conversation, uh, uh, to, um, to invest this point, that would be great.
Yeah. And that could, those are not necessarily mutually exclusive. So the council could enter into this agreement and then at a later time as things become more refined, um, and additional agreements can be entered into. This agreement can be modified if it's agreed upon by both parties. Uh, so there, um, there's certainly opportunity for, um, for any, you know, any, any additions, revisions to this um, in the future, um, either with this developer or with another.
Yeah.
I find it distressing that affordable housing is almost unaffordable. You know what I'm saying? It's like, wow, you're trying to make affordable housing, but you have to charge so much, it becomes unaffordable.
Well, we just need to be more specific with our definition of the port.
That's it.
I think we need more of this, for sure. We need more.
Right. Well, and the nice thing is that projects like this attract more projects like this, getting a start, getting, getting somebody going and making that successful will bring about more people looking in the same way. So yeah.
Exactly.
Well, I'd like to thank the council, uh, thank the applicant, thank the members of the public. Uh, I think this was a successful work session. I feel like I got what I needed out of this. Uh, so thank you. The next steps, uh, would be, as I kind of touched on earlier, would be regarding development agreements authorization, authorizations in general. Um, we're working with the city attorney, so we will come back to, um, the council with a, uh, first reading. And then regarding, um, this specific project, once that ordinance is in place, then, and we can, uh, work with the applicant to repair the development agreement in the meantime. But we would come back, um, come back to council and I'll think about opportunities to, um, if there are any um, further opportunities for presentations where we can get feedback at regular council meetings so that we can have any feedback that's needed before we enter first reading.
Thank you for.
Thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for making time to be here. Chaitin, thanks for all the work and figuring this out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Chaitin, can you send the stuff that you were sharing on the screen?
Yes.
Just.
My, my notes, my whole points. Yes, I will. And I, I intended to add it to you last week that I didn't get it done. So, but yes, I will.
Thanks. Okay, any, any last words? Okay, so it is, or Dana, anything from you?
No, this was really helpful and interesting. Thank you guys so much.
All right, it is seven fifteen and this meeting is adjourned.